Good evening. I'm calling to order the regular meeting of the Department of Education, February 12th, almost missed it by a month, March 12th, and we are meeting at the Fordice Building. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call and roll, please.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Here.
Mrs. Lize.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Sudar.
Here.
Mrs. Van Hoe.
Here.
All members are present.
Okay, we'll move on to adopting the minutes of February 6, 13, and 27. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mrs. DeAngelis. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Hoe.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lize.
Yes.
Motion carries, five zero.
Okay, do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Yes, we do. We have one addition, one revision, and one deletion. The addition will be item number 16A, and that's advertised for technology and furniture bids.
Mr. Vasek. That also includes a demolition piece as well.
And demolition. Thank you. The revision will be item number nine, recognize Division One district state swim meet competitors. And the deletion will be item number 11, Title One presentation.
And that will be postponed until March 26th.
Okay. All right, at this point, do we have a legislative liaison report? Mr. Smith?
Yes, we do, Madam President. Today is, as President Van Hoe already mentioned, but for the benefit of those who will be watching this at home, today is Monday, March 12th. Yesterday's Columbus Dispatch, the headline above the fold, and I'll read it to you, "Case Hic to Pitch Policy Reform: Taxes, Schools, Energy Likely Topics in Wednesday Budget Review." So Wednesday will be March 14th. So we're not altogether sure what's coming, but the Columbus Dispatch, again, education being one of those, so taxes, education policy, and energy. The Columbus Dispatch, in today's article, today's edition, again, Monday, March 12th, rolled out a little bit more information as to what they think might be in the governor's plan on education topics. But it's not entirely uncommon for governors to, we're kind of at the halfway point, the state of Ohio passes a two-year budget, passed last June, goes into effect July 1, and will roll for two years. And so it's not uncommon for governors throughout the two-year biennium to make some adjustments to the budget, kind of at the halfway part, at the halfway mark, and that's probably what this is. According to the Sunday Dispatch article, the taxes, what they anticipate Mr. Kasic possibly previewing on Wednesday, March 14th, would be a possible personal income tax cut that he is going to pay for through new and higher taxes on fracking, which is the process of drilling into the ground to extract oil from shale rock. Interesting that this potential proposal, because again, it hasn't come out yet, comes on the heels of an Ohio natural resources report that suggests that some of the earthquakes that have been caused in Youngstown are as a result of the fracking residual water that has been pumped deep into the earth in the Youngstown area, perhaps causing some earthquakes. That being said, again, focusing on, so he's going to do a bit of a, again, this is all proposed, or this is speculated by the Columbus Dispatch, but again, I think it could possibly affect school funding, that he's going to give a tax cut and replace that revenue through these fracking fees, which, anyway, we can have a different discussion on fracking another day. But the education policy, he is going to ask for support of Mayor Frank Jackson's plan that he's rolled out that is gathering some headlines here in the greater Cleveland area. But from today's article in the Dispatch, I'd like to read some other things that the Dispatch is suspecting, and the article is "Kasic Bags for Education Reform: Governor Also Previews Some Education Initiatives." And so from today's Dispatch, quote, "In addition, the governor's plan will call for new and tougher grading system for schools. Standards for digital education reporting academic performance of students attending technical schools and helping students find their passions and better understand the purpose of getting an education by providing opportunities for them to interact with business professionals and other outside-of-school activities." And again, the very first thing, "In addition, the governor's plan will also call for new and tougher grading systems for schools." That's Euclid. That's every public school district. And I would remind you that in the budget that was passed about nine months ago, that we are currently operating under, the Ohio public schools lost $2.9 billion as compared to the last state budget. I would also politely remind you and Governor Kasic that 90% of the students in the K-12 age spectrum in the state of Ohio are educated by the public school system. So at this point, I am now going to be very critical of the governor. It seems like he has a two- or three-year plan, which is that he is determined to underfund public education, then criticize public education, then privatize public education. And we've seen the first step a year ago, we're going to get the second step on Wednesday, and the forthcoming step is coming up. Because again, he gave us a budget where we lost $2.9 billion a year ago, he's now going to change the grading system that all public schools operate under, and that's all a move to try to further privatize public education, which is not good for the 90% of children in the state of Ohio that are getting all of their academic training through the public school system. So we will keep you apprised as this unfolds, but again, I wanted to point out what the Columbus Dispatch had and how, you know, I think it's going to unfold, but we will keep everyone apprised as the situation moves forward, and of course, how it relates to the Euclid public school system. That concludes my report.
Can I piggyback just a second?
Of course.
Since we have so many more people in the audience today, I just want to talk briefly about information that we all received at a seminar we went to from Dr. Diane Ratfitch. And, you know, the big push on reform has been, oh, the public schools, America's schools are broke because we don't keep up with the international standards and the tests that they give to all these other countries. Diane Ratfitch has studied this. She used to be a proponent of vouchers and charters and merit pay, and she has totally changed, because she said after studying it, she's found that that doesn't work. So then she further studied what is the cause for the public schools not doing as well as everyone thinks they should. And mind you, we have never been at the top of the scale, ever. Okay? So that's one thing to know right off the bat. But what she said was, if you have 4% or less poverty, American students do better than the best countries out there. They do better than Finland, better than Korea, better than India, better than Japan, if you have 4% or less poverty. A district that has 20% or less poverty, they will do equal to those countries. So if we only took the top 20%, we'd be right up there with everybody else. But once poverty goes beyond that 20%, it automatically increases, let's see, as poverty goes up, the scores go down. The schoolchildren, the K-12 schoolchildren, are the largest population in the United States that are in poverty. So the problem isn't what is happening in the schools. The property, problem is what's happening in society. And until we can get everyone to have equal access to everything that families that are in the top 4% get, we'll never score quite the same. And that's something people have to realize. It takes money to correct that, it's not going to happen, because we know that that would never, they would never get to that point. But it's frustrating to know that they're trying to change the grading scale, because they decided too many districts were excellent. And so therefore, that must mean that they're too easy on their grading, and so now they're going to change the grading scale. Somehow, I guess, I always believed as a teacher that all my kids could get As, but the state doesn't believe that. So beware when you see the new things coming out. Any district that has, what's our poverty rate now?
As measured by free and reduced lunch, it's over 70%.
So over 70% of our students qualify for free and reduced lunch. That's significant. That's a significant number, and those kids just need extra help, and it costs money to do that. Enough. Okay, Mrs. Lize, for the student liaison report.
I do. If I could just add one comment.
Sure.
You know, we're very lucky in America that we actually educate those children that are in poverty. Many of the countries that we compete against are very selective in the group of children that they decide to educate. So being born in America is a good thing, even if you're impoverished, because you still have the opportunity to have a fair, equitable, and equal education. So with that, I do have a student achievement report, and actually, this evening, it's going to highlight our culinary arts program led by our very own Chef Dan Esquivel. And Chef Dan and the juniors and seniors at the Euclid Bistro are beginning to gain a lot of local and state recognition for their culinary creations. Just last month in February, at a state competition in Columbus, Euclid students finished ninth out of over 40 schools, and more recently, several students took distinguished honors at a local competition in downtown Cleveland. Not only are these students garnishing, I should say garnishing, garnering much deserved recognition, they are working to earn college credit also, and a partnership with Tri-C right now allows our students to leave this program with 12 college credit hours. So by the end of this year, this program will be articulated with all culinary colleges in Ohio, providing a multitude of opportunities for our students in the culinary arts and possibly becoming pastry chefs and whatnot, so chocolatiers, all of that. So the Euclid Bistro is located at Shore Cultural Center, that's between Babin and East 222nd Street, and I'm just going to give a little plug for the bistro. Right now, it's open Wednesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays from 11:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And the bistro also offers a convenient carryout service on the same days, between 10:30 and noon. So, and the prices are so good, I have to tell you. They are, the food is excellent, and the prices are so reasonable, so, you know, I would certainly encourage everyone to give that a try if you can. So without further ado, we do, we have a video today that demonstrates the excitement of Chef Dan, or the excitement that Chef Dan has generated around this unique program, and you will see his enthusiasm and creativity have inspired his students to create some remarkable dishes right here in the center of our community, so.
Our culinary arts program is a very unique program. I interview roughly 150 students every year, and I only take 25, so there is a waiting list. A lot of school systems do not have this type of program. The junior program, they learn safety and sanitation and how to prep a restaurant, and the seniors run the culinary bistro, as you see here. They also participate in competitions. We had a competition in Columbus, and the students did very well, they came in like ninth place out of 40.
It means a lot to me. It's a huge thing, and it's a part of my life. I watched my grandmother cook when I was a little kid, so it inspired me to start cooking.
It helped me further my education and helps me learn like the business early, so, and later in life, I will already have that handled while I go to school for business.
Our program is based on maintaining skills and having leadership and working together with other people.
You learn about how to cook food here, how to prepare, how to, I work the cashier box really well now.
They also receive 12 college credits, and we're articulated with Tri-C and a few other colleges in Ohio, and at the end of this year, we should be articulated with every culinary college in Ohio. Our goal is to make sure all students do go to college.
I'm a senior in high school right now, and I'm planning on going into a culinary school next fall.
I want to own a gallery slash restaurant.
I want to become an executive chef and be able to cook everywhere.
Chef Dan is really great, like, he's there one-on-one with us, like, each one. If we need help, he'll always be there helping us, like, by our side.
He's not hard on you, where he makes you want to quit, but he's on you, so you can become better at what you do.
Chef Dan's cool dude. He, it's like he understands us.
A lot of people should come out. Our food is really good for us to be kids in high school.
And I just want to add one last thing. When this proposal came up, Dr. Jones was such an advocate to bring this culinary arts program here to Euclid. It was a beautiful collaboration between Dr. Jones and our administration and the city council and administration at the time, so it was, this is just a really win-win situation for our entire community, so, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And are there any visitor comments relative to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to recognitions.
Thank you, Mrs. Van Hoe.
Speaking of.
Speaking of the culinary arts, item number eight, resolution recognizing the 2012 culinary arts competition winners, and I recommend approval.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mrs. DeAngelis, sorry.
And if I may, read into the minutes. Be it resolved that whereas the Euclid High School Culinary Arts Program is part of the Family Community Career Leaders of America, and each year, culinary students compete in their annual event to earn college scholarships, and whereas the competition categories are team, garde, mangere, I guess, that's how you say that, pastry arts, and dining room service, and competitors are chosen by the instructor based on an essay and their in-house competition, and whereas the finalists from 12 area schools compete in an all-day event at Cuyahoga Community College, and whereas the following Euclid students placed in the stated categories, Marcalia Bennie, silver medal junior team, Jarrell Hill, silver medal senior team, and Gabriel Broome, bronze medal senior pastry arts. Now therefore be it resolved that the Euclid Board of Education extends its congratulations to these students for their accomplishments, which has brought recognition to themselves and to the Euclid City School District.
Call and roll, please.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Hoe.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lize.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries, five zero. Thank you. I'm not sure which of the students are here this evening. I don't know that any are, but we will read their names one more time. Yes, I understand. So we would like to congratulate Ariel, Marcalia, and Jarrell. So welcome Chef Dan to. You want to say a word about the competition?
Okay. Real quick, about the two competitions, the one we had down in Columbus is our Pro Star competition, and that's the curriculum we teach. That competition is where the students develop an appetizer, an entree, and a dessert, and they have two electric burners, and they have an hour, you know, to make these, you know, to make this whole meal on an electric burner. So they bake, they roast, they sear, they grill, they do everything on this electric burner. It's really, really amazing, and we practice, we start in late October, and we practice all the way up until end of January, and it's two nights after school, sometimes on the weekend, and, you know, every once in a while during class, we'll do a little practice. On the second competition, we just had a couple weeks ago, downtown Cleveland, is at Tri-C's new hospitality. It's a brand-new hospitality center downtown Cleveland, state-of-the-art, the convection oven, you can talk to the convection oven, and it turns on, and you tell it what degrees to go to, I mean, it's very state-of-the-art. So a lot of the students, I'm excited myself, I wanted to mention this, but we're going to start having graduates come out of culinary school from our first year, so I'm excited to see where they're going to be here soon. So thank you very much, and I'm going to keep doing my best for Euclid City Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is recognition for the swim team. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Sudar, second.
Second.
By Lize.
And if I may, read the resolution into the minutes. Whereas, be it resolved that whereas members of the Euclid High School Swim Team participated in the Division One sectional and district and swimming competitions, and whereas the following swimmers placed in the district tournament as follows, Samantha Lizey, 100-yard butterfly, first place; Samantha Lizey, 200-yard individual medley, first place; Andrea Bartel, 200-yard individual medley, second place; Andrea Bartel, 100-yard breaststroke, third place; Samantha Lizey, Andrea Bartel, Emma Larive, and Emily Sweet, 200-yard medley relay, seventh place; and Samantha Lizey, Emily Sweet, Kylie Bartram, and Andrea Bartel, 400-yard freestyle relay, eighth place, which qualified many of them to advance to the Division One Ohio State High School Swimming Championships in Canton, Ohio. And whereas swimmer Andrea Bertel became a Division One state finalist, and swimmer Samantha Lizey became a Division One state medal winner at the final competition on February 25, 2012, in the following events, Andrea Bartel, 100-yard breaststroke, 11th place; Andrea Bartel, 200-yard individual medley, 12th place; Samantha Lizey, 200-yard individual medley, 4th place; and Samantha Lizey, 100-yard butterfly, 5th place. Now therefore be resolved that the Euclid Board of Education extends congratulations to these swimmers for their outstanding efforts and sportsmanship, which has brought recognition to themselves and to the Euclid City School District.
Thank you. Call and roll, please.
Mrs. Van Hoe.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lize.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Motion carries, five zero. Okay, thank you, and as is our tradition here, and I know many of the students, maybe even all of them are here this evening, I'd ask you, when we call your name, if you will come up and receive your certificate, be congratulated by the board president, and stand in front of, on the dais. Samantha Lizey? Emma Larive? Now we make sure which one is you now. Andrea Bartel? Just before we introduce Mr. Elliott to say a few words about the girls, and I just want to say this is a terrific accomplishment. We've been watching these swimmers develop over the past couple of years into a very fine competitive group with outstanding accomplishments, and I know that swimming requires a great deal of personal effort and determination and dedication and drive, and I really admire your accomplishments. You want to, if we have parents here in the audience, if you would stand and be recognized for your support of their, of your students' accomplishments. Mr. Elliott, would you like to say a few words about the competition?
I'd just like to start by congratulating the girls once again, and thanking the board for recognizing them tonight. It does take a lot of hard work and a lot of dedication for them to accomplish what they have, and it's more than just over the course of the years, it's over the course of years, and they really have done a great job representing themselves, representing the city, and representing the school, and they are very proud to do so, so it's really nice to have them do that for us. At the state meet, they set three records, and at the district meet, set six team records as well, so that was another accomplishment.
Congratulations, Charlie, dear, thanks very much, Sean, I appreciate it. Thank you, girls, I appreciate your effort and being here tonight, all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. But this one just for you.
We should probably thank Mrs. McClave, who is a second grade teacher at Thomas Jefferson. She and her husband purchased the team their state's warm-up suits, so thank you, Mrs. McClave, for doing that for her, for the girls.
We might want to recognize them at some point.
Yes, we should.
So that we can show their appreciation. Okay, moving on to a presentation, Dr. Jones.
Yes, this evening, Dr. Selico will make a brief presentation about Race to the Top. We had originally committed to making a presentation every month to the board about this matter, but what we discovered was that the changes were so slow in developing that quarterly reports is what we are actually presenting at this point, so, Dr. Selico, if you would make a brief summary of what our accomplishments.
I could take a lot longer than I would like to. We've been working on a lot of different initiatives with Race to the Top, and as a reminder, we have, we have five administrators and five teachers that serve on a committee, and we meet once a month. This is year two in the process, and we have two more years to go. And so what has happened as a result of all of this work is we couldn't complete all of the work that we've signed on to with our scope of work with just the committee that we have, so a lot of subcommittees have formed, and so we have a number of initiatives happening, and many of them very big ones. We are redoing the teacher evaluation system, which is a large task, and we meet with that group. We have set six meetings, but it may go into, need some additional work, but we are looking at aligning our system with what the state has proposed, and there are a lot of nuances that go along with this program, so without, I won't go into them all, because there's just far too many to name, but we are working on that, as well as a lot of initiatives in the curriculum and instruction realm. We are looking at examining, redoing our report cards to align with the new Common Core, and the Common Core is a large part of our work with Race to the Top, aligning our work that we've done thus far on our curriculum and pacing guides, and getting them all in line with the changes to math and reading particularly. So one of the tasks we have, among many, is the report card system. We're changing the, we're starting with K through 2 grades, and that's, this year, we've formed a committee, we have about two or three from each grade level, depending, that represent different schools in the district, and so we've been concentrating our efforts on getting those new report cards aligned with the Common Core, as well as bringing continuity. As a group, we came up with some parameters to ensure that we have the same grading scales from K through 2, and to probably extend it beyond through 3 through 5. So we want to make it parent-friendly, so the jargon that is used is easily understood by parents, the grading scale is easy to follow, as well as the number of standards and indicators that are listed on the report card. What we found in our current system, one report card might have 35 indicators under it for a subject, whereas another may have 20, so we work within the parameters of different areas, so we're working on that, and we should have that complete, completed, something, a draft form by May, by the end of May, we'll get it in the hands of every educator K-2, so they can offer input, make some revisions, and then look to pilot it for the fall next year. And then we'll work on 3 through 5 the following year, and then we'll work on 6 through 8. So that's another large initiative with Race to the Top. Also, we're looking, we've been participating in resident educator program, which we actually had to participate in, and that is for the first-year teachers in the district, actually first-year teaching in general, and so those teachers, we have nine of them, and they've been assigned mentors, and they've been going through this long, year-long process, which is quite intensive and requires a lot of work on their part, on both the mentor and resident educator. So we've been meeting periodically, I've been keeping up with the updates, we have meetings as facilitators, a cohort of my colleagues in other districts, just to keep up to date with the changes there, so that's year one. We also have made a number of changes, requirements that we've had with the human resource department. We've made some changes in recruiting and interviewing processes, and we've been actively recruiting and using research-based methods for that, and there's much more value added. We've been talking about this teacher linkage. Currently, we have value added in grades 4 through 8 in math and reading, and that you see based on the school and the district, meaning value added, and now they have what's called a student-teacher linkage, and that will directly relate to the teacher, to the student, and so that's a large undertaking as well. So that will be happening this spring, and will continue into the years, upcoming years. So that's sort of a thumbnail sketch, we certainly are working on many little other things, but it's been a work in progress, and we've, we're continuing to work on our collaboration process, and by which we are working with, it's sort of a negotiated item with the Race to the Top group, and looking at how we will run group, and looking at how we will run collaboration next year for elementary, middle, and high school. And so we're making a lot of ground there, and we should have a draft that has to go to the board eventually. We hope to have a draft in March to present to you, probably in April, for your review, as well as the ETA, we'll present it to their executive board, and we should finalize that. So, moving along.
Can you explain just a little bit more on this linkage to this teacher with the value-added, you know, and then you said down to the students, so they're going to decide if each student gets value-added points, or?
Yeah, what, it's still grades four through eight in math and reading, and it's also, we were just informed that it's science five and eight, but we're still waiting to get some clarification on that. And it's, this is new, so we're learning as, as we go here. But essentially, it, it's, it's, if I'm the teacher, and this is my class, I look at the, the teacher linkage part, is looking at the percentages of which, of how much time a student spends in my class. So if Mrs. Lizey's in my class 100% of the time, I would be linked to her 100%, whereas Mr. Smith, sorry, Mr. Smith, but if he spends 80% of the time with me, 20% with maybe a special educator, or tutor, or some other thing, then that teacher would get assigned part of his time as well. And then there's a calculation in which they determine how much growth has occurred over that. There's a lot, a lot, a lot of questions out there, and a lot of anticipated problems, so it'll be interesting to see how this.
And so then that gets assigned to the teacher?
Right.
Like whatever, so it's not done as a class or a school, which we've done in the past?
Right.
And I believe that also becomes part of the evaluation process, or something?
Student, student growth measures. The, the way the language reads for the Ohio Teacher Evaluation System and the Ohio Principal Evaluation System is that 50% of an evaluation for teachers and principals in the ensuing years are going to be, is going to be dedicated or focused on student growth measures. The value-added scores are one element of student growth measures, but there are many more teachers for whom we do not have value-added data than we do. So it is just one portion of it, and we are coming up with an agreement as to how much of that 50% is dedicated to the value-added score. But for example, the, the types of challenges that are in front of us in fifth and eighth grade science, for example, those tests span a period of three years of testing, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, and so what do you do as far as, you know, how, what credit does a seventh and a sixth grade teacher get in, or what percentage of time is attributable to the seventh and eighth grade, excuse me, the sixth and seventh grade science teacher, as an example? There are many issues that are out there still. A student who enters the district in, on November 1st and stays with the district until March 31st will have less of the time attributable to that teacher than a person who is, a student who is here from the beginning of the school year through the end. The training sessions for this, the formal training sessions, aren't even starting until August, excuse me, April, until April 16th, and we are just now trying to wrestle with some of those elements, and it's a requirement of the state. The teachers have got to go in and sort of assure the, what percentage of time they spent with the child based on their working relationships with the children, and then the, the principals have to approve those changes or modifications. It's just another example, sort of a throwback to what Mr. Smith was talking about early. There seems to be a lot of effort on determining, you know, trying to link student scores on achievement tests to teachers' evaluations, and there's so much more to an education than is reflected in an achievement test result. But that's where the state is right now, and we're having to comply because it's state law.
Does anyone, does anyone have any comments, questions? Besides, I started off with one. The interesting thing, because I'm tutoring in kindergarten over at, at Upson through a special program through the Literacy Cooperative, we actually have pictures, black and white pictures of, that would be similar to what they would see on a standardized test. And some of the pictures, number one, as adults, we have a hard time figuring out what they're trying to show. And then for the kids, I mean, how many kids nowadays see somebody smoking a pipe? But yet, pipe is there for the letter P, and you're just like, oh. And then you have mat, which looks like a rug, but depending which letter you're doing, it's either rug or mat, and so forth. We have peanut, one peanut on the card is for P. If you have three peanuts on the card, that's for nuts. I mean, how is a kid supposed to understand this, you know? And this is what state is imposing on us to decide how well our teachers are teaching. It's crazy. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll turn to reports and recommendations of the treasurer. Mr. Vasik.
Thank you. Item 12 is a resolution to approve financial data as submitted to the board, and I recommend approval.
Motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mr. Smith. Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Lizey.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Hope.
Yes.
Mrs. De Angelis.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Item 13 is a resolution to approve amendments of appropriations as submitted to the board, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mrs. Lizey. Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Hope.
Yes.
Mrs. De Angelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lizey.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Item 14 is a resolution to accept a donation of $500 from the Robert E. Haynes Gift Fund. This is a annual event from the Haynes Gift Fund, and I recommend approval.
The correction is, it's Robert E. and Albert A.
Robert E. and Albert A., thank you.
Want to make sure they both get credit. Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mr. Smith. Any questions or comments? Every year they give us some money, and they designate where the money is to go, and this year it goes to?
$200 for the music department, $200 to the athletic department, and $100 to the big show.
Okay, thank you. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Hope.
Yes.
Mrs. De Angelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lizey.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Item 13 is a resolution authorizing an increase in expenditure for quality assurance testing services as submitted, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mrs. De Angelis. Any questions or comments?
I think Mr. Vasik said 13, and this is item number 15. I may have misheard it.
Oh.
I'm sorry. It is 15.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, on the testing here, this was the change order that they requested because they had more people to do the job?
More teach, more people, and then, and also more requirements. Based on the weather from the early portion of this, of the construction phase, there were additional tests which were needed to assure quality. And so we will be discussing whose responsibility that is.
Okay.
These were additional requirements requested by PCI, and so that we felt it must go forward, and we will sort it out later as to where the, the claim is.
Okay, so approving this is not going to prevent us from going back and negotiating or whatever with them?
No.
Okay.
All this does is allows PSI to, if it gets paid.
Okay. All right, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Van Hope.
Yes.
Mrs. De Angelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lizey.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Item 16 is a resolution determining that certain properties no longer needed and authorizing consignment auction for the sale to dispose of property, and I recommend approval.
So moved. Okay, Mrs. Sudar, thank you. Second. I'll say second by Mrs. Lizey. Any questions or comments?
If I may, this is a company, Kiko, that has performed auctions for other school districts, and this is mostly very old, unneeded furniture we have stored in, in Erwin, and we'd like to get rid of.
We obviously haven't used it for a while.
Yeah, there will be, there will be local advertising, so the community will find out about it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. De Angelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lizey.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Hope.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. And finally, item 16A is a resolution authorizing the superintendent and treasurer to advertise for bids for technology equipment, for furniture and fixtures, and for the demolition of buildings that are all part of the district's facilities commission project, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mr. Smith. Any questions or comments?
This will allow us to proceed with critical elements of our facilities project.
Are we going to find out what actually we're going out for as far as furniture and so forth?
Yes, we will have a report for the board.
Okay, thank you. All right, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Lizey.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Hope.
Yes.
Mrs. De Angelis.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero, and that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. And then we'll go to Dr. Jones for the reports and recommendations of the superintendent.
Thank you, Mrs. Van Hope. The first items, numbers 17 through 22 in the personnel section, will be presented by Dr. Selico, who will represent me in these matters.
Thank you. Item 17 is a resolution considering the certified staff for the 2011-2012 school year, and I recommend approval.
Motion, please.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mr. Smith. Are there any questions or comments?
I'd like to point out that we have a number of resignations due to the purpose for retirement, and I would just like to mention those people, although we will honor them in a June board meeting. We have Nancy Lawrence, who is a reading interventionist, Judy McElroy, a middle school assistant principal, Jessica Mason and Lynn Davis, who are both high school guidance counselors, Gail Rea, who's a physical education teacher, and Margaret Nielsen, who is a grads teacher. So we'd just like to thank them, of course, for all their years of service to the UCL schools, and we'll hopefully get to see them in June.
Okay, thank you. Don't we need to?
And, yes, and do we, do need to mention that Margaret Nielsen has expressed the desire to be considered for rehire by the UCL Board of Education in the same capacity, and I will be making that recommendation at a future board meeting.
Thank you.
We also will be adding to this list as time goes on, so because of the retirement incentive and because of the time of year.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Hope.
Yes.
Mrs. De Angelis.
Yes.
Mr. L, Mrs. Lizey.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Item number 18 is a resolution considering classified staff for the 2011-2012 school year, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mr. Smith. Any questions or comments? Call, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Hope.
Yes.
Mrs. De Angelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lizey.
Yes.
Mr. S, Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Item 19 is a resolution considering the Northeast Adult Basic Literacy Education Resource Center staff for the 2011-2012 school year, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mrs. Lizey.
Yes, this is Mrs. Gillette, who is the director of the Northeast Able Resource Center, who will be resigning effectively for retirement purposes effective March 31st. And two is requested that we extend to her the opportunity for reemployment, which would begin on June 1st, so that we will be handling these matters again at a future board meeting as well.
Okay, thank you. She does an outstanding job.
Yeah, she does.
Lot of experience there. Any other questions?
And she, by the way, during the year will be preparing her successor.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Van Hope.
Yes.
Mrs. De Angelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lizey.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Item 20 is a resolution considering the Adult Basic Literacy Education staff for the 2011-2012 school year, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mr. Smith.
And Paula Mullet is, who is our GED teacher, and it's special qualifications and qualities relative to GED, because she's working with adults who are returning to school, and she too has been, expressed the desire to be considered or rehired by the UCL Board of Education in the same capacity, and we will affect, the effective date for her retirement is June 1st, and then she'll return for next year.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. De Angelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lizey.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Hope.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Item 21 is a resolution considering a summer school director appointment, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mrs. De Angelis. Would you like to say who?
Yes, this is Ms. Janice Pavoda, who will be acting as our summer school principal this year. We're very pleased to have her. She is currently an assistant principal over at Central Middle School.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments?
Someone in the public asked me if we were going to have elementary summer school. We haven't for several years.
We have for quite some time.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Lizey.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Hope.
Yes.
Mrs. De Angelis.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Item 22 is a resolution considering grant payments, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mr. Smith. Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Hope.
Yes.
Mrs. De Angelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lizey.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Item number 23 is a resolution considering administrative appointments and contracts for the next round of their contract status, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mr. Smith.
Yes, these are our administrators whose contracts are expiring at the end of this year, and we need to take action as a board for them for next year.
Are there increases in salary?
No, there are no increases in salary beyond what was negotiated, so at this point, nothing. So, there's no changes in that.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I have a question on the Child Development Center. Would there be an additional administrator there to handle the special ed piece?
We are going to make that recommendation at a later time.
Okay, so there would be two administrators at that site?
Yes, we believe there will be, but we have not yet made that determination.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I have one here. This is my first time seeing, you know, being a part of this. Is it normal to do two-year contracts?
The, what we have done, we have made a change from prior years in which we have done three-year contracts to make them two-year contracts. The reason for this is because the Ohio Principal Evaluation System requires districts, if there is a underperforming or an unsatisfactorily performing administrator, after two years, you must cut them, fire them. And rather than create a mess with the, having someone with three, it's not that we anticipate this, but where we have somebody with a three-year contract and the first two years is not performing adequately, and we have to cut them, and they have another year. What I'm recommending to the board on behave, on the practice from this point forward, is that every year, we reissue a two-year contract and tear up what's left of the two-year contract prior. And this way, in essence, people always have the comfort of having two and a half years. If you have someone who is performing unsatisfactorily, we would not extend that person's contract. And then, we'd have that one more year for that person to make corrections, and if they didn't, then they'd be released, and if they did, then they could have another two-year contract.
That's because of the proactive side of it all.
Right, trying to be proactive in this matter.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Ho.
Yes.
Mrs. De Angelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Item number 24 is a resolution considering participation in the OSC School Bus Purchase Program, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by, I'm sorry, Mrs. Sudar.
Yeah.
Second.
Second.
By Mr. Smith.
Yes, this is a resolution to purchase four 47-passenger conventional school buses, three of them with lifts, for the 2012-13 school year. We will use the cooperative bus purchasing program of the Ohio Schools Council to reduce costs for that. The cost of participating in the Ohio Schools Council program is $325, and it's money well It may sound kind of counterintuitive to be purchasing school buses in a year when we have canceled transportation for so many, but so many of our buses have been on the old side in the past, for the past several years. We did not purchase new buses last year, and we are recommending this, and that the school buses with the lifts are because we are extending the service to our handicapped children.
It used to be privately done.
It used to be privately, privately transported at a much greater cost than what we can afford, or what we can pick them up for.
Are there any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Van Ho.
Yes.
Mrs. De Angelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Item number 25 is our resolution considering approving county service agreement for the 2012-13 school year, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mrs. Lysy.
This is our standard agreement with the county. We give them money, and it comes back to us, so.
The only time it happens.
That's right.
That's a good thing.
It is a good thing.